Yeah, let me turn.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 PM and I call this governing board's regular meeting to order. Let the record show that all board members are present with the exception of Mrs. Johnson. Holly Sheriff is on the phone. And the district is represented by Dr. Holmes, Kim McGovern, Kelly Siegel, Terry Romo, and Heather Rada. And now can I get an adoption of the agenda, please?
So moved to adopt the agenda? Second?
It's been moved in second and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The next thing we'll do is stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is our board meeting minutes not previously approved. And those were the minutes from our regular meeting that we had on the 15th of February, 2022, and the minutes of our work session that we had on the 16th of February, 2022.
I make the motion those minutes be approved? Second?
It's been... Motion to approve in second and all in favor? Or is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion?
Aye.
Okay. I did that backwards. Okay, and the next item is that we have are going to be our summary of current events. And we're going to start with the superintendent, Dr. Holmes, please.
Thank you, President Luteck. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a couple of items here. Summer Academy will be held from June 6th through... Monday, June 6th through Friday, July 15th. It will be held Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 2:00 for our elementary students and from 8:30 to 2:30 for our secondary students. Again, all Sierra Vista residents, school age residents can attend at no cost. We will begin registration for students on Friday, March 4th, and registration will run until May 2nd. We'll be providing ELA and math assistance as well as some fun activities for kids to do throughout the day. So we're hoping that we can match or exceed the number of kids that we had last year. We were close to 1,000, and that is our goal again for this year. And we encourage any staff members who would like to participate in teaching to let us know. Some congratulations are in order. As you know, every teacher, the Herald Review does its academic all-stars and Golden Apple honorees. And I'd like to announce the names of the Sierra Vista students and staff members who were recognized. Matthew Conroy, 7th grade student at George Clark. Ariella Antiman, 9th grade student at Buena. Kasia Davies, 10th grade student at Buena. Alyssa Saki, 11th grade student at Buena. Luke Serna, 12th grade student at Buena. Nareen Adams, 12th grade student at Buena. Gavin Brownfield, 12th grade student at Buena. And Erylyn Hyatt, 12th grade student at Buena. All academic all-stars, as well as the PBS, Perlo del Sol Student Council, was also awarded, and that's a new honor for 2022. In terms of our staff here in Sierra Vista, Tara Floss, teacher at Buena. Kimberly Federicks at JCMSS. Alex Wolf at Buena. Centoria Loudon at Buena. And Michelle Wambach, principal at Carmichael. There'll be a recognition banquet at Cochise College on March 19th. It's at breakfast at 9:00 in the morning, and there's still some tickets available. Congratulations to all of the student and staff recipients. Buena's DECA team will be sending four students to the national competition. They competed this past weekend and had several students advance to the finals. Also, Buena Fine Arts will be presenting A Wrinkle in Time, which is a musical play this coming Friday and Saturday, Friday and Saturday at 7:00. So if you were able to make it out there, please do and show your support. The Buena JROTC Cyber Patriot team was given the opportunity to compete at the national competitions during spring break. We just found out, I think it was yesterday or today, that they were eligible. And the board will have a discussion later on about having an emergency meeting on Thursday. Film and TV in Buena Hardo also recently went to the drag races to see how the team performs and related to what they've been learning in the classroom. It was a great trip for them to do that. As we know, boys' basketball advanced to the final four. And I believe at our next meeting, we will be recognizing the team and the coaches. Spring sports are running right now and competing this week. Tonight is boys' volleyball, JV baseball and softball. Thursday is boys' tennis and Friday varsity baseball and varsity softball. And several students in our Buena band and choir advanced to the all-state choir, orchestra, and band competition. So congratulations to all of those students. Lots of positive things happening in the district. That concludes my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Next, we'll start with our board members. Let's see, Joy, you want to go first?
Okay. I just wanted to say congratulations to our new principals that are being pulled on board. It's wonderful to have so much coming from within our district that is so positive for us. And congratulations to Deb Whiting on her retirement. Retirement is fun, Deb.
Do you have anything, Kim?
Yeah, congratulations to all the students and staff on the Golden Awards. And it seems like the district is doing some awesome things. We're on the map. And again, congratulations and welcome to Dr. Slaton. And congratulations to Ms. Jimenez for their principal position.
Okay, the only thing I have, that basketball game was so exciting. And the boys did such a good job. I love to see the kids out there doing sports and having a good time. I also attended the... What can we... Attended two. We attended the Boys and Girls event. They sponsor a student of the year, and it was actually a Buena student. His last name is Mims. He's a football player. He's in JROTC, represented the district very well. We're very proud of him. And that's all I have. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation, and that's about the school marquee sign from Mr. McGovern.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, real quick, if you recall during our scoreboard new signage project, we had included two or possibly three marquee signs. One coming going out here at Frye and then two others to be determined. So I wanted to share with you that we definitely have enough for two. And this is what the signage will look like from the front. This is going to be the digital. This is from the side view. They'll be about 14 feet tall, 10 and 1/2 wide total, with the digital display being 3'8" by 6'9". However, when we were trying to determine where to place those other two sites, signs, that's where the complication came into. So Ms. Weller and I were trying to figure out, what is the criteria for a site to be chosen? Right, is it who has the most traffic? Is it who has the best exposure? Who has the largest ADM? Which site requires the sign for messaging purposes? And which site can generate the most ad dollars? We didn't like any of these options. So because the methodology could not be determined, they did not discriminate against our students, staff, or parents, we decided that we would have to come and ask you for enough money to put a sign at all sites. We didn't think it was fair to say that, say, for example, Carmichael being way into... Or PBS being in residential areas that don't have a lot of traffic, are they not worthy of a sign? So we didn't feel that was fair. So that is why we're coming to you tonight to say, please allow us to go ahead and give or put a new marquee sign at all of our sites. So that way we have some new message... The messaging and branding that Ms. Weller is trying to accomplish with consistent colors for the sites, mascotting, district logo's going to be on there. We can consistently message everything because it's handled through one app. We need to get something to everybody. Or if we want to message something specific to the site, we can do that as well, all from the same app. So the added cost for this is... It's a big ask. It's $385,000 for those other six sites, signs. It will be paid for out of capital or plant fund. Remember, the plant fund is just sitting there because we have all of the ESER money. If we choose to put part of it out of capital because of the expenditure limit easing, we have plenty of funds available there as well. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have. Because we did put this on as an agenda item for you to vote on, but I wanted us to be able to have a conversation prior to that coming up for vote.
Do the signs are pretty large, and I'm guessing they agree with the dark sky city mandate?
I would have to defer to Ms. Weller. I do believe that we've met all of those options. But if the city does have any restrictions and, you know, if they tell us we need to go a little smaller for an area, we can, which would just mean a savings at that point.
Do you ladies have anything else? I think it's a great idea. I love the idea and the thought that you guys put into it, that every school should have a new sign and their mascots and everything on there. I think it's a great motivation for the students and also for the staff. I know they probably won't all look exactly the same because we just recently did something like this at my church. And different areas have different provisions. But the fact that they'll all be new and have the mascot at each school and that we'll be able to put out information through these, I think it's a great idea. And I'm glad you guys came up with that. And that's all I have. Does anyone have anything else?
Right, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our public comments. And with this, I just want to remind everyone that you have three minutes to speak. And if you could really stop after three minutes, because I got quite a few here. It looks like I got about 12 of them here. So that everybody has a chance to speak. And if someone says something that you've already said and you want to forego your moment, then you can do that. And if you would like a two-minute warning, we will give that to you also. And I also want to remind everyone that at the public comments, that we cannot actually comment on those. But some of the items might... It looks like will be on the agenda from what I see, and we'll be talking during that time on those items. Okay? And so first, we have, in no particular order, we have Richard Allen.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Richard Allen. Today, I'm speaking for my children, my wife, and any other parent in our community who might share the same opinion as I, but feel like they do not have the opportunity to let their voice be heard. My wife and I have two amazing children, a seven-year-old son in first grade and a five-year-old daughter in pre-K. We often discuss what is more heartbreaking as parents, the seven-year-old knowing what school was like before COVID and masks and him desperately missing the way things were, or our five-year-old not knowing any better and her thinking that her and her friends wearing masks every day is normal. While putting my son to bed last night, he asked me, "Do you think I shouldn't have to wear a mask to school?" Because it gives me a rash and I got COVID anyway. My son is only seven years old. And that's what's on his mind late at night when trying to go to bed. He has been in speech therapy since he was two and 1/2 years old. And one of the very first things we learned is he needs to be able to see the mouth to see the way he's positioned for proper pronunciation. The masks took that tool for learning away from him, and his speech is regressing. On top of that, he has also been diagnosed with perioral dermatitis. It's a red rash that circles around your mouth. I can't imagine how many children in our community are dealing with these issues and then some. And no, I'm not being a dramatic anti-mask parent. I'm just being a parent. Politics and agenda should have no place in parenting. He continued our talk last night with, "Do you think COVID is going away?" Because it's going away, that's what I shared for my good thing. In his class, each kid takes turns sharing one good thing going on in their life. Again, my son is only seven years old. That is the one good thing he felt like he needed to share with his teachers and friends. He finished his conversation, Terry eyes saying, "I remember before masks and COVID, I want school to be like that again." I get that we can't just make this pandemic go away. People are still getting sick. They're still dying. But when is enough going to be enough? And we start letting parents decide what is right for their children. I don't care what you may do regarding your personal health decisions, but I care about mine and my family's. And in my household, we've worn our masks, we've sanitized, and we've followed every rule for the last three years. And we've all gotten COVID. It happens. It's time to let parents move on and decide what's right for their kids. It is our right. I don't want to force my children anymore. I don't want my son's hard work over the years in speech therapy to continue to take a step backwards. I don't want him to feel embarrassed about his face breaking out with a red rash. I don't want him to spend his one good thing at school talking about COVID. And I don't want him to spend his nights in bed thinking the way his life used to be. I cannot stress to you how painful it is as a parent to feel like I cannot help or comfort my child in this situation because other adults who are not his parents decide they think they know what is best for him. If you prefer to keep your children a mask, I support you 100%. And I think you should always do what you believe is best for your child in all aspects of their life. However, I should be able to decide what is right for mine. If my conversation with my son last night showed me anything, it's that continuing to force our children to mask up during this crucial time in their life could possibly be more damaging than any of us adults currently imagine. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have Renita.
Renata.
Renata. How do you say the last name, Renata?
No, that's my first name.
Oh, yeah, Renata Dany?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. This is spur of the moment speech, but I wanted to also speak up. I have two grandchildren in the Sierra Vista School District. One is three, one is five. A three-year-old wearing a mask is no harm to anybody or a five-year-old. And I just heard recently that California, Oregon, Washington, and I believe New York are going to lift your mask mandate. So I just want to, like, ask to have another go. And it's time to move on and let these children, you know, go on with life and life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny Walston.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to start off by what I printed off today off of the district website. This is the district mission and belief statement. I'm just going to read the title and then a portion under... What it says under governing board. So your title says, "Schools are for children. Schools belong to the community. Schools are people developers. Self-effort educates." And then under the governing board, it says, "We believe students are the number one priority. The board conveys the educational needs and desires of the community to the district and establishes policies accordingly. The board maintains high expectations for the district and themselves in working towards excellence." So I just wanted to share that with you. That's on your website. And I got a couple of responses also from some of the board members for my emails. And I appreciate that because it's really dismissive when you send an email and you don't get a response. So I appreciate those that reach out and respond back to a member of the community. Hopefully, this mandate on students and staff is over or about to be in light of the new CDC guidelines and laws heading to our Arizona Senate for vote. Hopefully, it passes, 2616. If it ends, it won't be because of any of you, but rather because you have no choice and you will forever be known as the board and superintendent that kept SVUSD masks for over one school year. The voters will remember this too. Switching gears, I went by the district office to flip through the new proposed curriculum. In a third-grade teacher's instruction manual and others, I came across the instruction of culturally responsive teaching. Strange, this shares the same acronym as critical race theory and shared several key words and ideas. To the public watching, go see for yourself. They are still on display for a few more days. I took a picture of these manuals too, just in case you guys claim it's not CRT. I'm not saying it is. It may not be. But they were very similar words. And the acronym says what it says. I don't see color. My biracial grandkids don't see color. And this school district should not be teaching anything that separates us. This school district superintendent and board that represents the community and not the school should be less worried about masks and dress codes for grown adults that claim to be professionals, but more concerned about not allowing CRT in our classrooms and improving our school's rankings in math, reading, science, grammar, all of it.
Thank you.
That is three.
Can I donate more time if she wants to talk?
We're not donating time.
Brian Duncan.
So you're not going to speak, Brian?
I'll use whatever time she does it.
We're not keeping track of that, though.
Then just give her my time if she's not done.
Okay, go ahead then.
That education affords our students a place at the table wherever they may end up when they leave our schools. Spending money on books that may be against the law, that may teach CRT, is not a good investment for this district. And I encourage every one of you parents to go down there and look through those books to make sure it's not teaching something that will separate and make us go through what we just went through as a community and as a world. And for those of you who haven't seen, I'm going to leave for you the newspaper about the articles that we literally are spending time telling professional teachers how to dress. They should be spending their times teaching our children math, reading, and writing, not how to dress. They're professionals. I find it ridiculous that you're spending time on that and less on taking our kids out of masks and making sure that they don't see each other for anything other than a friend. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Donald Lee.
Good evening, board. I first want to apologize to you because we have put all this weight on you as the only one holding this. Because, Mr. Dr. Holmes, you have just as much to shoulder as they do. Either one of you could have stopped this a long time ago in your recommendations. So I digress. The summer of 2021, Governor Doug Ducey and the legislature passed a bill banning mask mandates. These are the lawmakers that the majority of us as Arizonans voted for. Due to some confusion and as to when the law took effect, we started this school year with masks being optional because, of course, the district did not want to break any laws. On August 17th, Dr. Holmes recommended, and the board voted unanimously to mandate mask wearing as the law would not take effect until September 28th, 2021. On September 27th, 2021, AmeriCopa County Superior Court Judge ruled the ban unconstitutional, not on its face, but because it was added onto a budget bill. So it was a procedural issue. The fact that this is what our lawmakers wanted did not matter to this board or this district. On September 29th, during a special meeting, the administration and the board recommended keeping the mask mandate, and the board passed it 4 to 1. Currently, HB 2616, a House bill that would ban mask mandates in schools, is making its way... It has made its way through the Arizona House and is making its way through the Senate, again, by people we voted for. Even if it passes, it won't go into effect until 90 days after the legislative session is over and this board and administration know that legally, they can write this out and tell them, defying what most of us want. Now comes the hypocrisy. As you all know, SVUSD was looking at a $5.2 million shortfall due to an aggregate expenditure limit, or you could call it a spending cap, which Mr. McGovern has explained at previous board meetings. Well, on February 21st, 2022, Arizona Senate finalized a waiver to the spending cap, which averted a major crisis. The same legislature that the majority of us voted for. And yet, you don't see our district defying this vote, do you? Why not? After all, it is a law that was passed in 1980 that created this spending cap. And it is constitutional. Ladies and gentlemen, our state lawmakers chose to play game... Chose not to play games with our children's futures by waiving the spending cap. We ask that you stop playing games by making medical decisions for our children. If not, our only alternative is to seek a medical waiver for our children or to support them in refusing their masks.
Thank you.
Make the choice tonight.
Next, we have Karen Christian.
Dear board members, my name is Dr. Karen Christian. I come to you as a registered voter, a parent of school-aged children, and as a person scientifically literate with my PhD in organic chemistry. I know this board has voted in the past to keep mask mandates in place. You've done so despite pushback from community members, students, and parents alike. You continue to enforce universal masking despite the fact that the CDC no longer recommends outdoor masking. And you made your vote despite the fact that you yourself, Ms. Robinson, work at a charter school that does not require masks. I hope to date that you choose to change your vote to uphold the wishes of this community and to reinstall our faith in your leadership. It is well understood that the majority of COVID cases in children are asymptomatic or mild. Looking data from the CDC's own website, we see children have a 50% higher risk of death from influenza compared to COVID. Even the CDC's new guidelines recognize that people who are at a lower risk for severe illness do not need to take the same precautions as those at a higher risk. I would like to think that you have our children's best interests at heart, but I honestly do not know. While you fixate on COVID and masking, you willfully ignore the serious harm that is caused by your interventions. The studies are piling up that show the clear harm masking does toward children. I'm going to cite from three different scientific articles, and I would be happy to send you the sources after our meeting today. From the article Face Masks in the COVID-19 Era, scientists report that face masks have been shown to have substantial adverse physiological and psychological effects. These include activation of fear and stress response, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance, predisposition for viral and infectious illness, chronic stress, anxiety, and depression. My own daughter suffers from chronic stress, and that stress manifests itself as sometimes debilitating stomach pain. I urge you to consider the many unintended consequences that you are causing by forcing children into masks. From the article Mask Education, we see that masks significantly affect children's ability to understand emotional signaling, leading to problems in communication, social interaction, and recognition of behavioral norms. And finally, from a study entitled The COVID-19 Pandemic and Child Cognitive Development, we see interventions such as masks have led to lower cognitive scores. Children now have significantly reduced verbal motor and overall cognitive performance. and overall cognitive performance, where their cognitive score is reduced by two full standard deviations compared to pre-pandemic. And it's even worse for children from families with low socioeconomic status. We don't know how long these effects will last. We don't know how long it will take to recover their speech delays, their mental health issues, or how long it will take to recover those missing IQ points. I ask you to start today the work of healing our kids. Let's lift the mask mandate, free our children, and start living our lives again. You have the power and the responsibility to eliminate this mask mandate. Let's grant our children the freedom we all crave, to breathe freely, to share our smiling faces with one another, and return to normal.
Next we have Lynn Patis.
Patterson.
Patterson.
Dr. Patterson.
Okay, sorry, Dr. Patterson.
To your point, thank you, Dr. Christian. That was great, but I'm, I'm afraid this is gonna fall on deaf ears. Those things have been said before and they don't listen. The studies are replete that these masks have very minimal effect on a pandemic, very minimal, if any. And the adverse effects are huge, which you just alluded to. And there's hundreds of studies about this. This is nothing new, but no one listens. And because of that, what's gonna happen in the future? They're going to have to list with this mask mandate, right? They're doing it in New York City. The state of the union, you're not wearing it. It's gonna have to go. But we're gonna remember how we were disrespected and not listened to. And we just talk and no one speaks back to us. There's no dialogue. That's what we're gonna remember. And what's gonna continue to happen is the leaving of the public school, the decline of the public school. If there's a decline in the public school, I'm concerned there's a decline in democracy. We need the public school. So at the work session, this board wanted to listen to the CDC. And the comment was made by our superintendent that any, the CDC says that any mask is better than no mask. That means, was that hyperbole? Does that mean some mask off, off the bathroom floor is better than no mask? Are we kidding? Can we think? Will we ignore PhDs, MDs like Macari, Rish, Kaldorf, Fatakaria? We're talking about Harvard, we're talking about Yale, we're talking about Stanford, we're talking about Johns Hopkins. Come on. Thank you.
Next we have Beth Hannah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you for being here, everyone. My name is Beth Hannah and I'm here representing my family. I do have children in the school system. My mother, Sally Calhoun, was an educator in the system. It's not only my family, but friends as well. Not all friends agree with me. But nonetheless, you know, I, I watched in the beginning that it was, as Glenn said, it was CDC were the guidelines that we were following. My question is, and I asked others who've been, I haven't been here very often, I've watched on TV, but what, what guidelines are, are we following right now? What is that, what is that baseline? What number are we trying to achieve? What is a good number? When we hit this number, we can stop doing this. Is that in place? Do we have that information? Or is it just a, a fluid, a fluid target? That's how I feel. I don't feel that there's something solid for us to be a point that we're striving towards. Also, you know, my heart goes out to those who have children who are suffering mentally and physically, as I think all of our children are actually, to different degrees. I, I know my child is, might not have to seen, have seen the doctor for it, but as a parent, I know my child and I know that he is suffering and his friends as well. I just implore you to go back to the drawing board from where you stand and what is the guideline that I am basing my decision on? Am, am I needing that? Am I striving towards something? Is it, is it swimming like the pendulum? What is it? And then please, share it with us. That's your responsibility, I believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Lacy Fitzpatrick.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. I wasn't planning on speaking. I was kinda talked into it, so I feel like maybe that was a sign. And I do believe in bigger signs. So I'm a mom of multiple children. They are all greatly affected by this mask mandate. Our entire lives have been changed. Sometimes you find the good in it, but ultimately it's been huge. I believe that masks should be optional. It is a medical decision. It's a decision made by the parent only. I don't see anything wrong with wearing them if it's important to you. But it's not your decision to decide what happens for my child when it comes to their medical well-being, unless it's greatly affecting another person. And I feel like we already know that everything's coming out and we're finding that maybe this wasn't as effective as we thought it was. So I'm gonna keep it really short with that. I think there's a lot of other people going behind two doctors, really passionate people. They said most of what I wanted to say. But I also wanted to touch base on sending emails. When we send emails as parents and community members to our superintendent and our board members and we get two responses, it's disappointing, especially from our superintendent. If I come to you with something important that is heavy on my heart in your schools, simple, received, we'll call you later, let's talk, anything. Give me something. It is disrespectful and if you can't just respond, reconsider your job position. That's all.
Next we have Sandy. I should have this right. Sandy, I'm sorry, Sandy, I'm so bad with names.
Hello. I would like to also request that you make the masks optional. States are granting the students and faculty their freedom back to decide in several states. New Mexico just recommended all schools stop masks. Three hundred thousand children liberated. Nevada made masks optional, four hundred ninety-three thousand children liberated. Virginia made it illegal for any school district to enforce masks now and forever. One million children liberated. North Carolina passed a bill to stop all mask mandates throughout all schools, one million four hundred thousand children liberated. Illinois just made masks optional for the entire state and districts were told that if they were breaking the law by enforcing them. Two million children liberated. Thank you.
Next, next we have Steve Conroy.
My name is Steve Conroy and I wanna start with the idea that the federal government created a pandemic of fear, which has covered our country and has destroyed our nation. They spent five trillion dollars to get rid of a disease that has a ninety-nine point ninety-six percent survival rate. That's crazy. And they, they closed down businesses, they closed down schools, and they've made you panicked about something that nobody else can understand. None of us wants masks. You are part of our community. You're supposed to be helping us. And you're, instead, you're sticking to some kind of requirement to wear these stupid masks, which don't stop the virus in the first place. None of them do. You could wear twelve masks and you still wouldn't stop the virus. At a point one micron, it'll go through anything. And viruses are everywhere. That's why they're called a virus. So we as a community come to you once again to say, listen, you're part of us. We're a community, we're a family. And we're all asking you to get rid of the masks. I don't see why you don't understand that. Unless you're getting a lot of money from the federal government to keep the mask on, that's the only thing I can think why you would wanna keep doing this to your community. Every one of us in here are saying the same thing. Get rid of the mask. Now, the federal government giving you a million dollars or twenty million dollars to keep them on? All right, tell us that, then we will understand. But otherwise, we don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mary Newman.
Hello, I'm Mary Newman and I have two high schoolers at Buena. This is my first time coming to a meeting because I am Canadian and I am compliant, but Hong Kong. The, the survey that came out, the question was, do we support the board, the school board with your decisions? I do. But you didn't ask me, do I support masks? I wish the wording on that survey was just a little bit tweaked. I think it would have maybe presented a different response from our community. But I just wanted to tell you all about something. You know what catfishing is? You know, when people are online and they're dating and they're pretending to be someone, but they actually look completely different? I just learned that there's something called mask fishing, that teenagers are now wearing masks because they prefer it over their actual looks. They feel ugly. They're suffering from acne and other things going on. These kids need freedom. They need to have a normal experience of that, not just eye contact, but love. Look at you in a smile, how does it make you feel? Teachers are not as approachable without their face being shown. I have a child that suffers from some social anxiety and that child will not ask her teachers for help. The teacher, one, she breathed it and went to the teacher and the teacher said, ask fellow students to answer. Well, now she has to go to another masked human and doesn't know quite how to approach that person because they're not quite a person. We are people and we need the full facial. So from a mental health perspective, for the psychology of our kids, kids suffering from depression, poor self-body image. This is my first meeting, so I apologize if I'm getting ahead of your agenda. But I really love what everyone has shared here that we need to consider the voice of our community, those of us with our children home. My children, my two teenagers, have a total of five Fs on their, they were junior honor society students once upon a time. They are suffering right now, not just because of the masks, but because of the crazy forty-eight, forty-eight hour policy. They can't return to school with any symptom. My son suffers from migraines. I know it's a, he had an aura beforehand, we knew what it was, but he was not allowed going to school. Because I reported it out on Wednesday for a fever that was on Tuesday, the child should have been able to go back Friday, right? Forty-eight hours? But because I, the parent, reported it Wednesday, that's where the date counted. So my child was sent home healthy with three Fs. We need to do more. My kids are suffering. I'm involved, caring, active parent. I've been in the schools with the principal, the guidance council, who are all phenomenal, but this is beyond your staff. We need to do more. We need to free the masks and make everyone more approachable so we can do better for our kids' mental health. Thank you.
Going back to our agenda, the next item on our agenda. Well, before I do that, Holly's on the phone. Holly, I kinda forgot you were on the phone there, sweetie, but did you have anything that you wanted to say?
No, I'm okay. I'll, you know, I can make sure at the, at the end.
Okay. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move we adopt consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion. Is there any discussion on that? I do wanna also let Mrs. Jimenez know that we're proud of her and I'm looking for great things as she moves on to Carmichael. And our new, is she here? Oh, she is here. Doc, doctor, help me, ma'am. Oh, she's not here, okay. But Mrs. Jimenez, thank you. I look forward to you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes for zero. The next item on the agenda is our policy, policy consideration first reading. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and review on first reading the policy revision recommended by administration of the following policies. GDBC, support staff supplementary pay slash overtime. GCD, professional staff vacations and holidays. GDD, support staff vacations and holidays.
Thank you. The policy revisions are necessary after adoption of the mid-wage schedules approved by the governing board during its December seventh, two thousand twenty-one meeting. And because of incorporating Juneteenth as a national holiday in the school calendar. Administration recommends acceptance on first reading for review in accordance with policy BGB.
Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor on first reading? Aye.
Aye.
The next item is discussion and action, resignation and waiver of policy GCQC for professional staff member Cindy Johnson. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request of resignation and waiver of policy GCQC dash R from professional staff member Cindy Johnson, kindergarten teacher at Wachuca Mountain Elementary School. Mrs. Hill?
Mrs. Johnson has submitted her resignation on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and you have an attachment with an effective date of March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Per policy GCQC dash R, if a staff member asks the board to approve a resignation after a contract has been signed and returned to the Human Resources Department and prior to June fifteenth, any such approval will be conditioned upon payment of five hundred dollars. Any requests for resignations after June sixteenth and/or prior to the end of a contract term shall be conditioned upon payment by the staff member of one thousand dollars as liquidated damages. The teacher may request a waiver of the fee by the board. Mrs. Johnson is requesting a waiver of the above referenced policy and she has completed an you have an attachment of the form. Physician's documentation is on file with the Human Resources Office. Administration recommends approval of Mrs. Johnson's resignation and waiver request.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes for zero. The next item, discussion and action approval of vendor purchases exceeding the hundred thousand dollar threshold. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the expenditures exceeding the hundred thousand dollar threshold for Amazon businesses. Mr. McGovern?
Purchasing department must receive permission from the governing board before approving purchases that will put a single vendor's fiscal year total over a hundred thousand dollar threshold. Because Amazon Business is on a US COM RTC seventeen zero zero six contract and has been proven to be a quality vendor who continuously provides quality service to the district, it is considered beneficial for the district to continue utilizing the vendor. Administration recommends approval.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes for zero. The next item, discussion and action approval of vendor purchases exceeding the hundred thousand dollar threshold. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the expenditures exceeding the hundred thousand dollar threshold for Precise Signs Company. Mr. McGovern?
Purchasing department must receive permission from the governing board for approving purchases that will put a single vendor's fiscal year total over a hundred thousand dollar threshold. Precise Sign Company is on a one GPA cooperative contract and will provide new marquee signs for the remaining district's school sites. The total cost for the additional six signs will be three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and will be funded out of capital. Administration recommends approval.
Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes for zero. The next item on the agenda is discussion and action approval of gifts, scope, and sequence. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding the updated gifts, scope, and sequence. Mrs. Vada?
School districts must identify gifted learners and provide appropriate educational programs and services for gifted learners that earn an integrated differentiated learning experience during the regular school day in all grades K through twelve. A gifted scope and sequence is a local plan developed by school districts describing a gifted education program and services for the identification process of and curriculum modifications for. and services for the identification process of and curriculum modifications for gifted pupils to ensure that gifted learners receive gifted education commensurate with their academic abilities and potentials. ARS 1577902. This update provides additional clarity and specificity to the Title I Cycle Five requirements of the gifted program. The previous update to the district's gifted education scope and sequence was January 2022. Administration recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for discussion. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes for zero. The next item, discussion and action approval facility waiver fee for the Klein Center for the Southwest Association of Buffalo Soldiers, SWAB. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the waiver of facility fees for the use of the Klein Center to hold the annual Spirit of the Buffalo Soldier Award Ceremony on May 14th, 2022.
The Southwest Association of Buffalo Soldiers is a local community nonprofit with the mission to bring alive the stories and honor the legacy of the Buffalo Soldier through student academic recognition programs. The association feels students starting with grades of C or below who have shown the most improvement should be recognized for their accomplishments and encouraged to continue and improve. This recognition program highlights over 200 students from 17 participating schools, including Sierra Vista Schools. The SWABS recognition program prior to COVID have been supported by the governing board for over 15 years. District administration recommends approval of the use of the district facilities and waiver of the facility fees.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say I appreciate this organization for recognizing those students who work really hard, but you know, don't get recognized. You're the honor roll.
I totally agree with you on that. This has been a great thing and they've been doing it for such a long time. And it does recognize those students who don't always get to be on the honor roll, but that they're doing better in their classes and stuff, so that is great. I'll go ahead and call it to vote. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Opposed? Passes for zero. Next item, discussion and action approval of Juneteenth holiday observation for the 2021-2022 school year. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve a Juneteenth holiday of observation for the 2021-2022 school calendar. Dr. Holmes?
The Juneteenth holiday is on Sunday, June 19th, going in 2021-2022 school calendar. The holiday can be observed on either Friday, the 17th, or Monday, the 20th of June. Administration recommends Monday, the 20th, as the day of observance.
Can I get a motion for discussion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think Monday's a good day. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes for zero. The next item, discussion and action rescinding of face mask covering requirement for school recommendation. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding the rescinding of the face covering requirement and making it optional for staff, students, and visitors while on school property and during school-sponsored events. So, we have this on the agenda, ladies, as a discussion and also an action so that we can also talk about it and then we can also make an action on it. So I just want to start with the rumor that we get money for the kids wearing masks. That's not true. We don't get any money for the kids wearing masks. The following of the CDC, we have been doing that. That's all I have to say about that, unless somebody wants to add something to that.
Well, we've been going by the county figures. When they first came out with those metrics, those are the same metrics we've been following all along. And as long as they were in the high category is where we were keeping it. But as they're going down, hopefully they can go down enough that we feel comfortable.
Dr. Holmes, do you have something to add?
This week, the CDC came out with new guidelines and I'm just going to share with you what they came up with. It was an effort to alleviate some of the issues regarding the mask mandates nationwide. And they have changed the focus of how they're doing their measurements and they're keeping it up at county level now. So you can actually go to the CDC website, click on your state and click on your county and it will tell you what the level of COVID is in the area where you live or the area where you may be traveling to. Again, they've changed the criteria. And I'll share with the boards the criteria and also what the recommendations are for those counties that are still in high. The new methods or methodologies that they're using. First of all, new COVID admissions per 100,000 population in the past seven days. If it's less than 20%, if it's greater than 20%, then it's high. Percent of staff inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients, if it's greater than 15%, it's considered to be high. And again, something that we're familiar with, total new COVID cases per 100,000 population in the past seven days. That remains, if it's greater than 10%, then it's high. Unfortunately, here in Cochise County, we're still high, but we're heading in the right direction. And as of 2/28/22, I contacted the county and we're at 12.7% positivity. However, that number, that metric is no longer used to determine whether or not a county would be considered high, medium, or low. And the county is still in high transmission as of yesterday. They're also changing how they are reporting this information. So instead of doing it on a daily basis, they're only going to be reporting it out on a weekly basis and that will be every Wednesday. As you know, each Thursday, the state puts something out. Their website has changed as of today and the information by county that used to be there is no longer there. So I don't know whether they are going to be moving towards something similar to what the CDC has. We're not doing anything at all, but all of this new information that has come down has, again, reduced the number of counties in the country that they're suggesting continue having indoor masks. So our numbers as a district, our cases continue to decline. Two weeks ago, we had 11 cases. Excuse me, three weeks ago, we had 11 cases. Two weeks ago, 13 cases. And so far this week, we have three. So our numbers are declining significantly and that is very good news.
Thank you.
I just want to add, recently on the news, I saw that the CDC were easing the indoor masking recommendations. But the reasons behind this is because many children and adults have been vaccinated in the hospital and the healthcare facilities are not being overwhelmed with high volume of COVID patients.
President Bute?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm really sorry. I'm having a little bit of difficulty understanding, hearing everybody and I greatly apologize for not being able to be there this evening. Could I please request that Ms. Minz and Ms. Robinson just speak a little bit more loudly into their microphones just for my benefit? It's obviously an important discussion and I would like to make a motion when one is in order.
Okay, do you have a comment or anything, Mrs.?
I do have a comment, but it's more explaining my motion, which I'd like to do after.
Okay. There's a couple of other things that I did also want to bring up. That we as a board, we do have the kids' best interests at heart. And basically, we make those decisions with some time, with the actual recommendation from the superintendent, but everything is ultimately up to us as we vote on that. And as you guys know, you know, the majority is a democracy, so the majority wins. And the rest of us just have to support that. There, a lot of times when we've had these meetings, which was surprising to me, was that we even, because when you come to the meeting and when everybody speaks, it seems like there's no, everybody wants to lift the mask mandate. But there are people out there, and I have gotten emails from people who say that they, you know, want to keep it in place. And so there's a little bit of this and there's a little bit of that in that. And so I just want people to know that there are people out there, just listening to some of the comments. There are some people out there that do want us to continue with the mask mandate. I personally, I mean, I think with the change, if I read it right, with the change with the CDC had come up with like 75% of the state now are able to, the CDC is saying that they could lift the mask mandate. So I think it should be the parents' choices. And I think that we've been going through this for a while and it's just my personal thought that it's time for us to lift the mask mandate. And that's just my, that's just my personal thought. I do respect my other board members and people. I mean, people, when you look at it, we're still high. I mean, it still says that we're high as a county. I looked at it, Santa Cruz and there's some other counties.
Maricopa.
Maricopa County. And it's weird because Maricopa is like bigger than us. So you can read a little bit about anything and everything and, you know, one of the things it said was because more people up there have gotten vaccinated, but there's other logical things that possibly could be altering that. I think once you have it set in sight about how you feel about it, a lot of things sometimes that you read don't always alter your decision. But I do think that, you know, everybody has the right to their own decision and I just want you guys and I just want the public to know that I love this city and this county too and I believe all the other board members do too. And we are, this is really hard for us and it is, we do care about everybody here. We do care about the citizens and so I'm going to stop right now. And does anyone else have anything that they want to add to the discussion? Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion.
President Bute, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, what is that?
I move that if the trend of declining COVID metrics continues, that we rescind the face mask, the face covering requirement and make it optional for all beginning on Monday, March 21st, after spring break. And if my motion receives a second for discussion, I would like to make further comments.
Is there a second? There is a second. It's open for discussion.
May I, President Bute?
Please.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. To date, this board has supported Dr. Holmes in following the recommendations of the CDC, the Arizona Department of Health, and our local health department in order to do everything in our power to protect the health and safety of our staff and students and to keep our schools open. I believe that masks have been an important layer to our district's COVID mitigation plan through the worst of the pandemic. As we move to the endemic stage, we are seeing the public health experts we rely upon modify their metrics and their reporting frequency to reflect this new stage of our COVID reality. As I stated at our recent work session, I believe it is time for this board to have a serious discussion about how and when we remove the mandatory mask layer of our mitigation plan. As Ms. Bute already mentioned and as the four of us sitting on the desk, except for me, as we all very well know, these are things that we can only discuss in a public meeting and we are all bound by our majority decision. I offer this motion in an attempt to honor our collective position to date and reach a decision that all, or at least most of us, can get behind. I recognize that this move will be too slow for some, too fast for others, but I hope that we can strike a balance between all the stakeholders we serve while remaining closely aligned with the prevailing medical and scientific consensus on effective COVID mitigation. And I thank my fellow board members for their consideration of this motion.
Is there any more discussion on the motion?
If I had been making the motion, I would have said April 5th. So I would have pushed it back a little bit further just to make sure we continue in this lowering. But that's the motion on the floor right now, so.
I would have moved for an earlier motion to do this. I just feel like that we should just move forward with this. The cases are declining, as Dr. Holmes said. And that's my thought. Mrs. Robinson, do you have anything?
So basically, ladies, once we vote on this motion, the majority rules. Unfortunately, one of our board members is ill, so depending on how the vote goes, it's to my understanding, if it's a split vote, that we would have to have like another meeting or something to do, to vote again. So I guess I will, with nothing else being said, I guess that's something, I guess I want you ladies to think about. So I guess I'll go ahead and if no one has anything else, I just want to remind everyone that the cases are declining and yes, some schools have closed because they did, they, and I don't know for sure because or because they have or have not worn masks, but I think people understand that and something like that happened and we had to do that. Hopefully, we wouldn't with the cases declining. That's just something that we would have to do and I just think it should be everyone's choice. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call it to vote.
Will you repeat it, please, or have Holly repeat?
Oh, Holly, can you repeat that, please?
My motion?
Yes, please.
I move that if the trend of declining COVID metrics continues, that we rescind the face covering requirement and make it optional for all beginning on Monday, March 21st, which is after spring break.
With that, I'll, and we'll do a roll for all.
I have one quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
With the way the motion is worded, if the trend continues, so when would we look at the trend again? In another week, in the week before spring break?
Holly, did you, did you hear that?
I did hear that and I'm definitely open to that. I guess I'm thinking the week of spring break, if that's something maybe administration could look into for us.
Yeah, so we check that on a weekly basis so we can provide that information to the governing board.
Okay, we'll do a roll vote then. Those, I'll go ahead and call you all, all one by one, those in favor or to cash your votes. Mrs. Robinson? Mrs. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Minz?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson? I mean, Ms. Sheriff?
Aye.
And I vote no. So it's a split vote. So we will have to, on that item, we will have to come back again. We cannot do it at this meeting. So going on to the next item, information and discussion item. Is there anything else or matters about the board which may engage in discussion that we'll take no action on? Is there anything else that you guys have? Number ten, our next item is request for future agenda items. Does anyone have anything else?
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting, Mr.?
Meeting over spring break?
The twenty-second?
Okay.
When's the next vote on the mask mandate?
Well, we'll have, that's something we don't, we won't know. We'll have to talk about that, but we'll have to see when we can put that back on the agenda again.
Well, I think we probably should put it back on the agenda for the meeting of the twenty-second.
Okay.
So Sheriff gets what she wants anyway?
So we will put it on the next. Guys, it's just how it goes. I mean, that's, this is the way that the board has said things are set up. I don't like it always either, but it's just the way things are. So I ask that you please just keep order. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Good night.